Um, I don't even know where to look for people at home. I think they're, uh, good evening, everybody. You need something?
Yeah. Where is this being taken down? Where's the, uh?
The camera?
Is the camera taking the noise too?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it can, it can hear us, yes.
Full time.
I think it's from the ceiling. Um, alright, so, uh, welcome, everybody, to a joint meeting of the planning board and the town board. Um, town board, can I have a motion to open the work session?
Motion to open work session? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
You guys need to do the same?
I guess we need a motion to open the joint meeting on the town board. Here's our motion.
Zoom, go ahead. He's first. So he, he said, so, yeah, I said second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We had four of us, second, El Dad.
Aye.
Perfect, okay. Um, I'm assuming.
El Dad is also on his way.
Okay, perfect. Um, alright, so while we're waiting for El Dad, I just wanted to, uh, thank the planning board for meeting. I know it was very short notice, so I appreciate those of you who can be in person and, uh, and online, um, via Zoom. So I just wanted to take a moment to explain to everyone here and anyone listening at home, um, kinda how this came together. So, uh, last month, as you know, the town board, we referred our draft legislation for, uh, the 50 North Greeley project to the planning board for report and recommendation. Um, that is required, uh, as a zoning amendment under our town code, and it gives the planning board a chance to weigh in, uh, with its thoughts, um, whenever the town board's considering a proposed zoning change. So last week, I know that the planning board discussed the draft legislation at your regular meeting, and after watching that, I realized it would be productive and helpful to get both boards together for a discussion before the planning board finish your report and recommendation. Um, the proposed legislation was created in connection with a specific development project, 50 North Greeley, so it's more tailored, um, than the broader overlay zoning concepts that we were discussing before this application fully materialized and obviously last year and in the past years. Um, but I wanted the planning board to hear directly from all of us on the town board and to hear your thoughts as well, but what we're trying to achieve with this legislation, along with some development scenarios on North Greeley that we wanted to avoid. So some of those, obviously, um, the Rite Aid property and the property to the north of that, I would say, are both somewhat unique in size. They're both large, they're oddly shaped and very irregular shape, and also they back onto the Metro North Railroad, um, unlike the properties across the street on the east side and even further down and, and kind of closer to the center of the town, to the light. Um, it's also been vacant for approximately five years, so we wanted to seize the opportunity for, for kind of an exciting project to see what we can, uh, have developed there. Um, we're sensitive about allowing additional height especially, and this, this came up all last year and the year before, especially as we approach the intersection of, um, King Street and of Lower King and North Greeley. That, people were saying, is kind of the center of town where everyone drives through, so we're sensitive to, to having tall buildings right there. We thought it made more sense. If any additional stories, we're gonna be allowed to have that kind of further out as you head out from the center of the hamlet. Um, also, just to let you know, and we've all on the town board, well, except Holly, who's brand new, have said before that we are enthusiastic about this proposal. We think it's very exciting to build a zero-carbon building using sustainable materials. We would be the first town in, um, in Westchester, I believe, uh, and maybe even the tri-state area to have a building like this, and it certainly fits within our branding where we try to be a sustainable, very environmentally friendly community. So kind of with that said, I wanted to start the discussion. Um, and, you know, with those in mind, that may also inform, I think some of those things I just mentioned, maybe you were not aware of when you had your discussion last week. So, you know, these are things we considered both just as what we thought and also in response, frankly, to a lot of comments that we received hundreds from residents during the form-based code discussion where we didn't want taller buildings on the east side of the street, for instance, and where we do wanna try to figure out these two very, you know, the subject of this overlay zone are two very difficult properties. And frankly, you know, I, I don't wanna see apartments being built there that are facing the Metro North Railroad that have windows that are not allowed to open. You know, so I think that this proposal was actually very creatively designed so that, um, hallways and more public spaces are the ones that are facing the tracks, so that every single apartment or retail space being proposed has an opening, has windows that can open and has space they can look at, green space they can see, and really, um, isn't confined by the railroad track, which is obviously right adjacent to those two properties. So, um, that being said, why don't we open up to the town board? If you guys have any other thoughts that you wanna give to the planning board, and then if you wanna let us know your thoughts, concerns, so, you know, and we also wanna give, I think, the developer who's sitting, they are sitting here today, uh, thank you for coming. Not, not to present, but certainly if we have questions, um, they are all here to, to answer those and to become part of the conversation if we'd like them to.
So I have a question for the planning board, and, uh, I listened to your most recent meeting, and I really, um, you know, I thought that your points were very well taken. Um, I'm wondering, having heard what Lisa just talked about with respect to the uniqueness of the two properties and, and the, uh, the well-designed project that, you know, might, might or might not change here and there, but, um, and the, the green and sustainable building, I'm just wondering if we could work both with the applicant's proposal and at the same time, create a more holistic plan for the area, you know, doing a traffic study for the town. I mean, I, I can't, I don't really believe that North Greeley is so separate from the entire town that we can do just a parking study just for North Greeley. You know, the whole town is quite small. I'm just wondering if we could bring these two elements together, taking a more holistic approach along with considering the applicant's proposal, given, given the advantages that, you know, they have, they brought to the table with, with the various features, you know, whether it's three stories, you know, retail, four stories, those are all elements we, we can talk about. But I'm just trying to find a compromise where we can make sense of, of both, both areas of concern.
Well, I, I don't know if we're really at the point where you really start talking about compromise. We don't have the project really in front of us.
Well, compromise may be a wrong word. We know what, we have two areas of concern. One is, you know, the advantages of the project. The other is taking a more holistic approach.
Yeah, and, and I, I, I think that we should do that, and I think that's, uh, the intention of the legislation because it is taking a holistic look at these lots, which I think, um, the initial language and the proposed language and the, and the legislation put us off the track a little bit. I think that these are very, very special, very difficult and constrained, uh, farcals. And as a result, uh, they need to be looked at a little bit differently. I don't think, frankly, that, um, some of the green things that are being recommended here are that special to the north side or west side of North Greeley. Those should be town-wide almost. And I think to a very large extent, that what we see in the legislation is really duplicated in what we have in our, our town code now, the building code. So the issue, I think, I think fundamentally, we have, from our standpoint as planners, trying to project ahead, not just looking at a single project and, and what happens here, looking ahead so that, um, we think there's, there's probably two lifts here from our standpoint, in terms of, not our standpoint, but the, the town's codes. Obviously, the, the height. But I think the, the one that really, uh, and we didn't have information about it, we didn't realize that they had already, uh, invested in, in a study, which we had that. But, um, is the parking. And, um, I, I think most of us would agree that, uh, the, the residential lift going from 1.3 spaces to one space is not significant because of all the things that they articulated in their application, transit-oriented development in the hamlet, all the different things that they have planned for, you know, uh, sharing cars, et cetera. So that didn't seem to be much of a lift. Uh, the, the issue where we start to grind to having some problems is the part, our current parking regulations, restrictions, um, for the retail side. And I think it's reasonable to conclude that perhaps our current code is, is too onerous, but the difference between what they would need in terms of off-site to make it work may be, may be a stretch. We don't know, we don't, you know, we just.
Is this a secret?
I have a prop.
Okay.
Can we see it now? We're not gonna listen to anything Bob says.
You're in trouble.
I know that. First she shows it, first she hits me over the head.
The darts are coming, no, no, no. So you were saying this, and it, it, it reminds me, and I think you are right, and I know the planning board has looked at this, and I think that, you know, one of the things we need to look at as a town is just sort of our thoughts about parking. And do we wanna kind of stay in the past where we were quite, where every house had three cars and they were all driving them all the time? Or do we wanna look sort of toward the future and electric cars? And maybe our town, um, shuttle that we have, maybe that should be electric and we can utilize it more so people can kind of get around town without using cars as much. Maybe we can develop the chop line so people can be walking into town a lot more. Um, but I did have an idea about parking, which is the prob, um, that kind of came to me because I don't sleep anymore, and it was a thought that I wanted to just bring up to you guys. I actually thought it was, so, this is the current parking lot, right? At the train station. So right now, this parking lot, we know, is not, is underutilized since COVID, people aren't coming back, going back to work full-time. Um, this is, all of this right now is permit parking, right? For people who buy the permits, go into the city to work, et cetera. This right here, if you drive in on Woodburn to the right, right? This is behind like Taco Street over here. This is also permit parking, but it's, it's daily permit parking, so I forget what it costs, like $20 for a permit and you can park because you're going into the city for the day and you pay your meter for the day. My thought, given that most of this is actually empty right now, is take this entire parking area here and turn that into our regular three-hour municipal parking. It would allow significantly more parking, it's like about 100 spots. I know people don't like to walk in this town, but it would also allow people, let's say there, there is a diner there, which is what we want. I personally would love people to park here, walk out, walk to every single resident, every single commercial property that we have, because this is the ball field, the town hall, the school, is this way, right? Toward the former Rite Aid property. I would love somebody to park there and wanna go to the diner and say, you know what? Look, there's squires, I forgot I need to buy a hat, and ooh, look at that beautiful thing in that store. So it actually would encourage vitality throughout the whole town. It would significantly increase parking by 100 spots. Then our daily parking, the, the $20 thing, uh, permit could move right here in the circle, and all of this can still be our permit parking. We have plenty of parking. And then, um, later on, when we do our, our kind of analysis, um, and we have RFPs that have come in, that we're gonna, we're gonna interview firms to talk about, um, kind of decision-making for this area, maybe we build a community center, whatever it may be, and maybe that community center has some kind of parking garage along the train tracks over here. I don't know, but that would allow more parking there as well. But that's something, you know, that may or may not ever happen. But I thought this was actually a very good idea and would add 100 new spots of municipal parking that anyone in town could use, but could be used for a diner, could be used if another building comes in, could be used just for more parking because all of a sudden there's a big sale at Desires and everyone wants to go get jewelry. It can be used for whatever, but I thought that that was a great idea because right now, your average, um, person who comes to downtown to shop or to eat cannot utilize those spots without a permit. So if we make these the regular three hours, that buys us a lot, and we still have, right now, this isn't even used. You go, uh, any, any time, maybe a little bit right he, uh, no, this is used, but this really isn't used right now. So, um, that was a thought that I had, and we happen to have this lovely map in the clerk's office, so we brought it in. So I don't know if that's something you guys wanna consider too, but I thought it would be a way to kind of help.
So if I, if I could.
Can I put this down or do you wanna use it?
Uh, no, no, that's okay. You can take it down, thank you. Um, I think you said there are, excuse me, now Victoria feels better.
I do.
I thought the folks, uh, could see it up on television, I don't know how they shine.
Could you see it? Oh, they could, they got thumbs up. Camera's right there, I think, so I think.
Wow. Looks scary in here. I know.
Alright, so.
So, uh, you said 100 spaces in that lot.
I think it's about 100.
Yeah, so you'd essentially be taking 100 spaces off of the commuter parking inventory in order to do that.
The daily commuter, no, but we would move them.
Yeah. Well, no, you'd be, you, you can't, you would be taking 100 spaces off of that lot because you'd be moving these spaces into that lot.
Right, we'd be moving the daily permits, but.
The monthly lots would be shy than 100, and if that's like 100 out of 900, I don't know how many spaces there are.
1300.
1300.
1300, you know, that's probably not that big a hit these days, so that sort of, I would think that that probably makes a lot of sense. What I would say, though, is that a diner itself, a 4,000 square foot diner itself is probably not a big enough anchor for people to come and park in that lot and take the walk all the way over to the diner. I think that, that what you probably would have is people parking who wanna go to the diner, who'd be parking closer to the diner, and people who want to visit the other part of the town, like South Greeley, would be parking there. I'm not saying it's a bad idea.
Yeah, that's okay.
I'm just suggesting that, that the diner is not gonna be drawing people from that lot, but otherwise, I think it makes sense.
You should know too that the applicant has reduced the size of the diner because a 4,000 square foot diner is a really big diner. So I think it's now like front of house for patrons, like 1,500 square feet?
1,800.
To 1,800.
And what's the kitchen?
In the kitchen, somewhere around 15 to 1,800, and then about 1,200 of regular retail.
So the diner's around 3?
3,000 for the diner.
Got it, thank you.
But only the seating area would only be about 1,500.
And, and again, if we can successfully land a diner.
Yeah.
Restaurant operator.
That's a premise that, uh, you have to prove.
Mm-hmm.
So what, just some general concepts. Instead of getting so far into the specifics, like where we're gonna have the parking, I, to, to Vicky's point, the term holistic is, I think, critical here to see how everything plays out with everything else in town. You can't look at anything, whether it's on North Greeley or elsewhere, whether it's west side or east side on an island, because we're such a small community in terms of the hamlet, and what you do at point A is gonna impact point R and down the road. And we have to be, as best we can, prepared for what that means, and it's hard to do so. The, it's a big leap, as, let me draw that back a second. I'd, I wanna see this succeed in terms of this concept and this project. I think it could be really fabulous. But I also have to be realistic, and there's certain leaps of faith that people have to make, and, and you don't wanna make a leap of faith without being really immersed in the facts and the science and whatever it may be. So, um, how does this type of parking or lack of parking impact the side streets? How does it impact future development to the north? And while I may differ from my colleagues on the board, I personally don't have an objection to Susan Lawrence being four stories, and a future board may think that's okay too. Now, if we allow for this limited type of parking, where we're hopeful that the future is, is shared, how does that adversely impact future development so that it can't happen? Um, and that's, that's a big concern of mine. I don't know if we'll have any answer. We may have to take that leap of faith.
Well, I don't think we should make a leap of faith, but I think those are the questions.
Right, so, so I think.
We have no answers at this point.
Right, right, so we need to have.
Those are the questions.
I, I think whether you call it an overlay or a special permit, whatever, whatever you wanna call it, and that's not really my, my wheelhouse, but it needs to look beyond, in my opinion, even if very limited still. I, I think we're on agreement, we're not looking for east side of, of North Greeley. But for the west side of North Greeley and what could be big structures, how do we make it happen? And at some point, if, if there was a stomach for it and it was solely retail, pardon me, solely residential, for example, well, that would change the parking issue quite drastically.
Absolutely.
And I'm not necessarily suggesting that, but my point is, I, I think there's a lot of things we have to go through to get to where we are, and my biggest concern is that holistic view, because we may wanna change something in 10, eight, 15 years. We can't lock ourselves in with the hope that this parking is going to work, and we need to see how everything works together and either limits or enhances another possibility down the road. So, and those are generic statements, but.
Yeah, well, they are, they're important, that's how it starts. And I think our position is exactly as yours, and that is, you don't want just to have a static study of where we are. Uh, our position, we, we feel as planners, is to try to project ahead as to what realistically could happen and can happen. And, uh, our concern was, let's not preclude, uh, anything as of right that they have right now for rights of development on the east side of North Greeley as well. Uh, let's not take the off-site parking that's available there with this project and then leave inadequate space for parking for subsequent developments. So that, Jeremy, those are the questions. I don't think we have any answers, but that's what we.
And to, I think, to Tom's point just a moment ago, I, I think the person going to the diner, regardless of the size, they're gonna park on the side street, they're gonna park.
As close as they can.
Yeah, they're not gonna park.
If that's what.
Especially it's lousy weather, they're not gonna park far away. But I'll just go back to saying, I, I really wanna make this happen, and hopefully, we don't wanna see another three, four, five-year deal where we're trying to figure out something, you know, that takes forever to make work because we'll never see anything.
Can I, can I jump in for a sec?
No, please, I'm done.
Hi, El. Hi, everybody. Um, I wish I could have been there in person with you. Apologies for being remote. Um, so, I'm so happy we're having this conversation. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all about this. Projects like this are exactly why I joined the, uh, the town planning board, and, um, so I, I'm happy to be here and chat about this. Um, you know, and, uh, Vicky, thank you so much for watching our last, most recent, uh, meeting. I appreciate it. I, I don't know if there's any viewers out there, but it's nice to know there's at least one. So, uh.
More?
Alright, I'm loving it.
Yeah.
It's not unanimous, I guess. So, a couple of thoughts. One is, um, in general, we wanna, you know, safeguard from the worst-case scenario happening and plan for success, right? So safeguarding for the worst means thinking through what, so that we don't make the rules so that this project is a failure. A failure to me, and, and, and I've said this before, a failure to me of this project is, is a vacant, uh, ground floor, right? A retail ground floor that, that can't be leased up because people don't wanna come, because they can't access it or they find, uh, alternatives that are better for them. That, that, that's a failure, so we wanna think through, how do we avoid that? And then we wanna plan for success because, from my perspective, we're thinking about this project, a specific site, 50 North Greeley, but also, if it's successful, others will wanna do something similar in our town, and, and I welcome that, but, but, you know, to some of the points already made, we have to think sort of long-term. And in general, these are, what is appropriate for this from terms of, uh, the design, the planning, the site planning, the, the height, the, and most notably, the parking? And then two is, um, is the process. It's approved, right? Right now, we have a special permit lying in front of us that, that I'm sure that if you watched our hearing, you know that, that, uh, I think uniformly, we don't love the, the, the language that was proposed for a whole host of reasons. But I will say again that I think when we talk about the parking issue, it's really, really, really important to distinguish between residential parking and, um, parking for the commercial. I, I am happy to reduce the residential requirement as far as possible. The reduction here that's being proposed is from 1.3 to one space per unit. Um, I have no problem going lower than that, especially if it helps the commercial piece of it to make sure that the commercial ground floor is successful. The reduction that's being requested for the commercial piece is very, very, very significant. And I am, as much as anybody, in favor of green, sustainable development and a reduction in the use of cars, I'm very, very, very much supportive of that. Love the idea of electric vehicle charging, love the idea of reducing parking requirements, but I also wanna be realistic when it comes to the commercial piece. I have no problem reducing the parking requirement for the residential to zero. I'm sure the developer and the applicant won't want that, but it's not my problem if there's less of a demand for those units. I have no problem if those units are, are vacant because people don't wanna buy them. That, that doesn't impact the town in any significant way as far as the planning and, and the walkability of it. Um, I, I want it to be. To.
El Dad, you're breaking up a little bit.
I'm so sorry about that. Um, anyway.
Do you wanna try shutting your video off? Maybe it'll help the sound for a minute.
Sure, I, I, apologies for that, then. I'm, I'm in a coffee shop in Queens. Um, so, anyway, we need to think about what we want to see here and what the process looks like. Those are two separate questions, and, 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 uh, whether it obviously concern us, I, I'm very happy to have this discussion if you want.
Great.
So I, I'd like to address Victoria's point, which, um, I, if, we're talking about, uh, parking as, uh, the key, I, I think rightly, the sort of key component about the density capacity of this particular site. And it, I agree, I, I think I agree with you. Perhaps this is not what you're, where you're going, trying to get at, but I think I agree that you really need to understand what's going on down there, not just with respect to the existing parking inventory and the availability of vacant spaces, vacant spaces, right? I think you need to really look at what the overall parking, future parking demand will be. And there, if, if we're going to be making, giving incentives, and if you ask me, giving somebody a special permit zone is a big incentive. If we're gonna be giving incentives to one property owner to develop, what do we give to the rest of the property owners down there? And my big concern is the kinds of incentives that are being asked for with regard to parking could be the kinds of incentives that you no longer have the power to give to other property owners who one day may wanna assemble their property with, you know, the, the neighbor or developer coming in and wanting to develop something, and all of a sudden, the only option is for the town to build a parking garage, to, to sort of be able to meet that parking demand. It seems unfair to me that this would be done without understanding what those consequences might be. One of the things planners worry about and look to is what are the unintended consequences? And that's sort of a big potential unintended negative consequence. This is not a big thing to find out. We've been asking for this to be fought, to be looked at for quite a while. And I think that it's, that it's, you know, your planning department can do it, um, you can have a consultant do it, however you wanna get it done. I think that that should be the premise for understanding and making decisions about this particular application.
Right, you guys had started looking at this, right? I don't know.
We did, but then, but then, it, well, then we understood that you were going to go ahead and issue an RFP for the parking study, so we thought, well, you know, we'll just step back and let you guys do it because that's what you guys do. And so we just didn't do it. Yeah, I think we did start it a couple of years ago.
It was like a couple of years ago, though.
I think Tom and, and Kanon were working on it with, with Sabrina and staff. And, um, I don't know what happened, but.
It was a couple of years ago.
Yeah, it was a couple of years ago.
It was, it was a while ago.
Yeah, so anyway, it, it didn't go forward, so it, um, it's, it's something that, you know, certainly could be and should be done, I think, would help things. It would, I think it would help the applicant. Um, and I think it's, I think it's something that maybe you can just fold into
Um, and I think it's, I think it's something that maybe you can just fold into what you're doing now with the RFP for the, uh, parking consultant that you will be considering hiring, uh, in connection with this project, just expanded it and say, okay, project. Just look at the parcels over on the east side of North Greeley, project, you know, what they can do right now. And there's. Three floors and some retail and some residential, whatever it might be, and project what that might be reasonably. And, uh, you know, not a catastrophic, you know, secret exercise. So it's, it's got, you know, people hanging off the rafters. We have to have parking for all this kind of stuff. Something that's realistic, I I think would be very useful.
And would it be overly onerous to project as well for for the rest of the downtown?
Well, when you say.
No, it should be done.
The the hamlet.
Yeah.
I should say.
For the whole hamlet.
The hamlet, because like we said, it's it's a small hamlet.
Right.
And, you know, these artificial divisions are are not realistic.
And ideas like this, though, I mean, like, like Lisa's concept here, I mean, really, these are, these are real big potential changers in how this all works too. So that's the kind of stuff that you would want a consultant to think outside the box and say, we don't really care so much about the static where we are, but what can we do? And that's a, that's a great idea. We can pick up a hundred. How does that work for the rest of the town? I mean, I think that's, you know, those are the kinds of things that need to be looked at.
Well, and frankly, after COVID, right now, that back lot is completely empty for the most part.
Always, yeah, this.
The back lot is, you walk there, there's.
Except Saturdays, right?
No, not even Saturday.
But my point is that that there's a significant amount of parking there too that may be able to be utilized. I don't know what it's going to be like in two years, but.
That's the thing, though. That's a very, this is a very short term look.
Right, but I don't know that anyone can determine what that's going to look like.
Yeah, that's exactly it.
Like, we're not going to wait ten years before we decide to do any development to see if people start going back to work full time.
So we can't, we can't enable development right now and give away parking if we don't know what it's going to look like in five years, like you said.
So if. But we, so you're saying.
Can I?
For five years?
No, I'm, I'm saying that I think that we need to look at the entire hamlet's parking to understand where dominoes would fall when you start somewhere.
There, there may not be a.
So the, so the one, the one thing that I would add to this is you can do parking studies that are sort of I'm, you know, which could say, let's project X for one year, three years, five years. So there is a way for you to go ahead, have some comfort in the short run, know what the middle term looks like, and and have a stopgap where you're sort of looking to see if the parking scenario is getting crazy in five years, because now suddenly you have four other parcels that came online, added that many units, added more retail, and there needs to be some sort of stop to sort of reassess that. So I, 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 the thing to remember is we, we sort of chose the path of not coming up with any kind of, um, large scale, uh, planning uh, across the downtown. We're now choosing this little corner to say, let's try this as an experiment, and maybe there are things that'll, it'll have an impact going forward. And if that's the case, great, but I think, and maybe that's the way to go. We are going to have to test Lisa's, Lisa's point. Like, we're going to have to start somewhere and then have a way and have these braking mechanisms to say something's not working right. But to Tom and and Bob and the planning board's point, if you have an outlook of, you know, here's the one year scenario, here's the five year, here's the ten year, and you have something in hand to start with, that's useful. Um, I know that for this particular developer, it may be too much to ask, but it's like, as Tom said, they do have the privilege of coming first and getting a big break in some ways, right? And we might be cutting them a a much bigger break than the rest of the folks who come along after. So there has to be a mechanism for us to to correct at some point. Like, if you take an example of, like, Pleasantville, where you walk through that retail street, like, it's only retail, it's ground floor, and you look at the street parking on a Saturday, it's absolutely full, right? And they have lots, and you move away, like, three minutes away, there's parking everywhere. But there's this mad rush to get into that street. So there are things we have to sort of, but it, but still, it's a nice little retail street, right? So there are, there are things that we have to consider, and there are parking studies that would account for that kind of um, information, that could account for the kind of uses we can support as well. So um, I agree that we shouldn't stop thinking about the near term because we can't project the, the, the long term. So that's my.
I think it's, it's, it's a little hard to do, um, unless I'm, I'm misunderstanding your, uh, concept of, um, near term, midterm, long term projections. If if you're talking about demand with respect to future development as a consequence of future development, those kinds of scenarios are usually, uh, demand-driven scenarios, you know, market demand-driven scenarios. That's the way, you know, developers assess, you know, where to go next, right? And.
Sure.
And not only where, but what? And North Greeley presents a real problem in that regard because of the, the, the size of the lots there on the, um, eastern side. And it's, they, they might be able to, if they were able to, I'm sure they would love to be able to take up some of this market, absorb some of this market, right, which is out there. But they can't because their lots are too small. It's very difficult for them. And because their lots are so small, it's a little, maybe a little bit unfair. How do you account for them in a set of, of market projections, one year, five year, ten year? It's pretty hard to do because those are very, very special cases.
No, I was. Sorry, I was talking about the town parking study as a whole, right? That the understanding of how, what that scenario looks, one year, three year, five year. I mean, it, it, the, what we're saying is North Greeley is too small to come up with a, with a planning exercise. Um, and the town was too mu, like, the the hamlet was too much, right? Like, we didn't want to commit to that either. So I I'm just saying that there has to be a way in which we can figure out steps which have, right, some sort of braking mechanisms built in um, that allow us to rethink this, um, going forward.
Tom, I think what I'm wrapping my mind around now is you had mentioned that, you know, we don't want to give all of our incentives to the first one that we give the bite to the apple to, right? But we can't do a one year, five year, ten year study because the lots are too small. So then it's hard to know if we're going to give all of our incentives away to the first person if we also don't know if they're going to need the spots because the the lots are too small. Do you see what I'm saying? I'm trying to understand how we could do one. They seem to go together.
Well, the, the, the fact that, the potential fact that there are spaces available, right, public spaces available for development on the other side of Greeley is an incentive for some of these property owners to say, hey, here's our opportunity. And actually, it's probably pretty tough just to do one of these twenty-five foot lots, but I think that you might be able to get six, eight units actually on one of those lots. It would probably require that they be, they have to find, if we're using a one percent, one per unit ratio, they'd have to find six lots, six spaces somewhere, public spaces somewhere. And so it seems to me that we need to be sure that, I think, that those spaces, um, maybe are available or a percentage of those spaces are available so that they have the opportunity to do that. And if there are enough spaces available, then maybe there is actually the incentive for a couple of property owners to get together, join their lots and produce a bigger lot, which actually is a more efficient and more contributing to North Greeley. One of my, I'm sorry, one of my concerns is, this feels like when we talk about we're going to improve North Greeley, I mean, I think that was the original objective. We're not really improving all of North Greeley by this proposal. We're essentially, uh, improving just the east, the west side. And that's because, I understand, that's what's before us. But my concern is that it will, because of the fact of that, it will make it more difficult to do the rest of North Greeley. And that's why I think that I think that you need a parking study which addresses all these things. And if you're going to do zoning, it takes a lot of effort. It takes a lot of town, more time. It takes staff resources. It takes money. It takes consultants to rezone something. And if you are going to go ahead and do that, maybe you ought to use those resources to look at an overlay zone for all of North Greeley. Bring the, the essential characteristics of this particular proposal into that study. But use those resources to do all, all of North Greeley.
So.
And you get done, you know, almost the same amount of time, maybe, maybe not, but it seems to me you ought to be doing that.
I, I have a couple of questions. So first, the, the matter brought before us is not for all of North Greeley.
I know that.
It's for this specific project. But I don't think it's a problem because we've already said, we heard it in the Form-based code, we were elected because of that to say we don't want large development on the east side of that street. Now, also, you were just talking about, well, what if they can put six units? The, the applicant right now is not proposing that any parking for their residential units is going to be off-site. All of the parking for their residential units are proposed to be onsite under their building. So.
Well, forty-five or all.
All, for all, for, as far as I understand, for every single apartment, right? So if you take that to its logical conclusion, if anyone else wants to put more, they can put their six spots, if they're developing six apartments, on their property.
They can't.
It's, well.
Can't. I I promise you, you can't be done. A twenty-five foot lot, it can't be done.
Well, but why is that the applicant's problem?
It's not the applicant's problem. I'm not saying it's the applicant's problem. It's a town board.
Why would we hold up this application because of a potential that that somebody who bought a lot that size could potentially maybe combine it with somebody else at some point in the future if they wanted to sell? And maybe at that point, fifty years from now, put up something bigger. I, I, to me, I feel like if somebody wants to put up residential right now, it it doesn't need to be considered because they're not taking any spots from anyone else for their residential property. It's all on their property. So for their residential units.
I'm not, I'm not arguing.
So it's not taking any public spots.
I'm not arguing that. I'm looking at the proposal, the full proposal, which is, includes commercial, retail, a diner. That, I think, and Bob has pointed this out, I think, that, I think, is sort of the delta which challenges, brings up this, uh, uh, concern about parking, parking availability for everybody. If the, if it turns out that the proposal, three stories, five story, not five, three, three stories, four stories is all residential, and they can do a mix of residential, commercial, you know, I don't care, whatever the town feels is 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 appropriate and good. And that can all be done on, all the parking for, all of that can be done there, on their property. You know, that's great. Or if the town decides through some study, which looks at all these things, that they can have some public spaces in order to do that, I think that's great too. We're not, I I'm personally, I'm not against this development. I'm not against developing the property. I mean, we're all for, right, developing North Greeley. My concerns are that this is a particular potential unintended consequences problem that it just takes, it's so simple just to, we can debate, right? The, the, whether it's going to happen or not going to happen. We just need to do, I think, we just need to sort of look at it and then we'll know. And it it's entirely possible, it's not going to be a problem, but we don't know whether it's going to be a problem. It's a simple study. It really is. I mean.
Yeah, especially given that we have so much underutilized parking right now in town.
Okay, so let's do the study. Before you're saying move this over there and then take the stuff that's closer to the part of the town where they can't do that right now. Now, that's, yeah, right. And it's gonna, and it's gonna probably be a long time before everything goes back, but there will be, I mean, I see some companies are saying you work in four days a week in the building now. You know, so that's.
And I don't know that it would be a long time. I I don't think we can predict it. I mean, no one could have predicted what happened.
Right.
Already. So I I personally think this is going to come down to retail. Whether we can allow retail there at all or not. And I, just to tell you what I think personally, I would be ready to give up retail in in that spot, if that's what it takes to get some development going. I don't know how the applicant feels about that. Um, I love the idea of a diner, but I don't know that we can force the market to provide a diner. We have a lot of retail now that is, uh, not as vibrant as it should be. So maybe if we provide more residents and don't compete with the, the existing retail, we would have a more, you know, a healthier economic environment.
Can I ask, is there? Is there a change that could be made? I personally really like the idea of a commercial retail space, and I think that a lot of residents in town would be disappointed if we put up a residential-only building. And I I think there's a need, I do think there's a need for a little bit more. I do think a lot of people would like a, a, a nice little, like, lunch cafe or something like that. We really don't have that other than Bobos. And just as a new resident, young family, I I think it would be nice to have another reason to spend an afternoon downtown, go to scattered books, the library, whatever. I'm wondering, because of the size requirements or because of what's been allotted now, if we changed it, if we made it smaller, is there a zoning or code change which would then decrease the amount of parking that we would need that might make it work better?
Sure.
So. And I think they did that, actually.
Okay.
With the, uh.
Want.
Sure. I mean, I know they made it smaller.
So I I, again, um, we can talk about parking, um, and we can talk about it all night long. But we don't have the information to really come to any, I think, we don't have the information to really come to any conclusion about it.
I think we're asking the right questions.
Right.
And I think so, it's, it's important for you guys, and I think it's, you know, one of the things that we said the other night was, uh, I think it was Eldad who said it, and a couple of times he said, these are threshold issues. So, for example, much of this parking, if not all this parking issue, goes away without, without retail. But I think Eldad said, well, that's a town board issue. You guys have to decide how important the commercial mix is on the first floor. We think it's important, by the way. I think the applicant thinks it's important for just activity and and and, uh, for the town. So how do we make this work? To your, to your question, and again, this is what Tom's harping on is the study. There may be ways, we have regulations now that I I think we asked the other night, you know, based on the four thousand feet, how many parking spaces would the diner require? I think it was like sixty or seventy spaces.
Fifty spots.
That not.
It's ridiculous.
That seems.
That's for a four thousand square foot.
Three thousand square feet of diner and twelve hundred square feet of retail.
And what about?
Fifty parking spots based on our current regulations.
Our current regulations say a family of four going to the diner, you need to allot for two cars.
Two cars. That's what we're saying.
Which is ridiculous.
You have, those are the things that have to be, I think, that should be looked at.
There's also.
Make, make some changes.
Maybe, maybe not. There's also, there, there are waitresses, there's kitchen staff. So, you know, employees, I'm not saying.
We have.
I'm not saying the rate.
Yes.
I'm not saying the ratio is correct. I'm just saying that it's not just the patrons of the restaurant. And that's true for every store, by the way.
And what about the reduced proposal, the eighteen hundred square feet?
So, so that number is based on how many seats in the three thousand square feet is front of the house, back of the house. Those are calculations based on New York State parking regulations. This isn't us that picked it. The parking consultant did this, then ran the traffic, the parking study. It's not me. I, I hire parking consultants to do this at, at your staff's suggestion. That's what was done to figure out how many parking spots were needed for the amount of retail. And then we also have commercial parking allotted for in the building, and then there's a shortfall. So based on the, the requirements of the town on the nineteen fifties code, we're forty-two spots short right now. There's plenty of parking in town based on the parking study. That parking study can be expanded, et cetera. But also the nineteen fifties code can be updated to two thousand twenty-three.
So.
So, um. Tom, let me just hop in for a second. And again, I'm, I'm, I'll piggyback with Vicky again. I I don't necessarily object to having it, um, residential, uh, although I agree with you, I, that people are going to want retail or 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 restaurant or commercial. But we can see something like Bobos, which has to be well less than two thousand square feet in its entirety, thriving. There's no reason why we need something anywhere near a magnitude, and even if that, even at eighteen hundred square feet, it's got to be less than that. It's got to be probably a thousand square feet or so. Um, and you could have more residential and 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 we're talking about holistically. You don't have to have all of your, your fun now. Meaning, if we, if we set it up and it's more residential now, that can allow, if it works, to see a future developer say, okay, we'll work there with residential. Now we can have and see how it all works together. Now we can try to deal with the restaurant. And now we can cross that bridge in terms of if we have to build a structure or not, or whatever we can do with parking. But I don't, we don't have to fit every need and want into this one structure. And if that means reducing it in terms of retail or restaurant or commercial and increasing residential to make the parking work, then that's still a win. Because if we, if we try to get everything in this, we may just lose altogether. And that's catastrophic, I think, for the future of the community. So it can be piecemeal. This may not be perfect, but it works in that size, more residential than we wanted. And then the next opportunity, and and the next developer says, well, look what they did, and look what, look how successful that was. Look where the, you know, look, look how it came together. So it doesn't all have to be, I think we have to open our eyes and be a little more liberal in our view of what we want this to be, so it can work more holistically.
So I, there's, um, I, I just think that, you know, we just, we're not at, at a decision point on any of this. And I don't think you can be until you get the information and need to be at a decision point. So again, we can talk about all of these things now and we can, you know.
But the big hiccup, the town is the parking.
Exactly. So I'm saying that one needs to do the study so that you have the information. And, you know, there's a very good chance that it's not going to be a problem.
Right.
But you just don't, I don't think, you know, I, there, there, there has have been representatives. I there 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 has have been representations I've heard tonight that that this is a really difficult site. And it's the easiest site you have down there to develop. It's the biggest site. It's deep enough right now in order to get big enough right now under current zoning to get three stories of residential forty-five units with parking on site. Where else can you do that down there? The only difficulty actually is the the fact that it backs up to the railroad. That's the difficulty. But it otherwise, it's actually the best site you have down there. It's actually the only site you have down there to do anything substantial, unless somebody finally decides to assemble some sites on the other side of the street. So the so I'm sorry, let me just finish. So the notion that incentives need to be given, uh, maybe this is not where you're going, but that's what I thought I was hearing. Incentives need to be given because this is such a difficult site, I think maybe is misplaced.
Okay.
Did you um just?
My name is Phil Carmel. I'm the land use attorney for the applicant. I just wanna clarify what's actually in front of uh the town board and the planning board right now. We are not asking for any specific parking accommodation uh right now on the commercial. What's in front of the town board right now and the planning board to to give advice to the town board is the proposed zoning text. And the proposed zoning text has one space for one residential unit. Uh, and on the commercial, it says that we have to comply with the town code, except it gives the town board discretion when we do file the special permit application under the zoning to uh to require less parking based on certain specified criteria. So we will have to do whatever studies um the town um requires us to do uh in connection with our special permit application. But for the for the planning board to give advice to the town board now on the zoning doesn't require a decision as to how much parking should be required for uh for this particular project. I think the criteria here should be reviewed. And if uh if they're if they're good criteria, that can be stated. If they're not good criteria, that can be stated. But I think that's really the issue. In terms of a a whole study of the hamlet, I think that's been done because you have a, you did an environmental impact statement for the form-based goal. And the no action scenario, of course, looked at what would happen to downtown in the future under existing zoning and projected future development and projected future parking. So we can, we can talk about that uh when we submit our special permit application, draw upon those data. But right now, all that's before the board is the zoning.
I just have a quick question. I'm not able to see who's speaking, so sorry about that.
Phil Carmel, the attorney for the developer.
Okay.
And the owner.
Thank you.
Well, I what I would say is, I mean, you're right when we deal with the specificity of what's before the town board and before the planning board. And, you know, we will very respectfully review your application. What we're talking about here is our greater obligation to the town. And that's why you see that we're putting a greater context into the discussion.
And I think that we're we're struggling actually to try to come up with something that makes reasonable, rational sense in terms of the criteria for what we're going to be studying. And I'm not quite sure we're there, but I think we need, first of all, data. And from there, we can extract from the data what we what we need to do next. But I absolutely, that's that's correct. I mean, this is the legislation that we're looking at. And I think that was one of the problems that we had with the legislation. There wasn't sufficient criteria for, we thought, the town board or planning board or any other reviewing board to to reach a decision in terms of what those, what the elements would be that would grant the applicant the leeway on the application. What what are the bases that the town board would say, yeah, this is not a problem. We can give you the the fifty spots that you're short. So uh and that goes to actually the site. And I think it also goes to, as as we already said before, a holistic review of of that area. So I don't think we're we're disputing or arguing. I think it's, we agree. We just have to get that, the the those standards understood. For you, for your sake and our sake.
In terms of residential only, pause on the other stuff. The planning board thinks that one spot per unit is adequate, sufficient. You're fine with that?
I I think it would be. I mean, I, we don't know for sure, but I suspect it would be.
I have to hear.
All things considered.
The units that they're talking about, you know, I think that that's adequate. I wouldn't go much less than that. I can't imagine anybody living up here without a car.
And we have the unique feature of car sharing, which we haven't seen before.
Yeah, okay, I understand that.
Then I.
Okay.
Which I think. Which, by the way, flopped three years ago, right, during COVID? So there was no car sharing or there was no air sharing, so.
I mean, I will tell you just when I travel to see my daughter in in Houston, I never rent a car because the hotel that we stay at has a Tesla and they will drive you within a certain amount. And nobody rents a car at that hotel because everybody just utilizes their car service and it works quite well.
That's a hotel.
Yeah, there you go.
It's a hotel.
It's a hotel.
Well, no.
You're on vacation.
What the developer is saying is that they are going to have this sort of service with this type of electric car sharing that can be utilized by residents of the building.
Okay.
A king to a hotel.
Okay.
And um so that would limit potentially the need for additional cars.
Okay.
If I had one car.
You actually get to rent the car on an hourly basis.
No way, I understand.
That are there. So it's not like you're sharing with your neighbor. You take it for two hours, the next person takes it for two hours.
I think we're familiar. It's like a zipcar.
So.
Just like zipcar, they're all like.
It's still a thing.
So it sounds like one of the overarching themes here is.
I think that's the question is, you know, we don't have data about the parking. We don't have data about the uptake on a car sharing. Like, I I feel like this is a.
There is data.
We submitted all of it.
Not for the residential.
I apologize. But sorry?
I know, we need to get, with respect, we need to get you up to date on um this application a bit, but we do have that data. No, no, but she didn't realize what was, yeah, and you guys haven't seen it either, actually, but.
We didn't even know there's a parking study till yesterday.
Yeah, I don't know why. You should have known that, which is one of the reasons I wanted to call the meeting because I realized there was information that was lacking that you should have had.
Thank you.
Another thing I wanna throw in here, and I I don't wanna frustrate the applicant, so don't listen. When we look at the existing rights to development, I also wanna be sure that we consider the the future development potential of town-owned lands. Because we do wanna look at that. And I think that there's great potential there to build so something wonderful for the town, maybe a new community center.
That's what the charrette process is, that we are going to start commencing. But again, that has nothing to do with this.
But what I wanna say is, if we're taking a holistic look at the future, that that's something I think we should keep in mind. Be- because precisely, Lisa, we're we're planning on doing charrettes or focus groups because we want that to happen at some point.
Correct, but that's town-owned land that we can, we can make that work, whatever we decide to build on that. This is, with all due respect.
Talking about.
I don't wanna wait three years for us to do those charrettes to decide we're building a community center before we tell them at Fifty North Greeley that they can build their one little building.
This doesn't have to stop the Fifty North Greeley project. I think, you know, we can work around the edges on that. You know, we've talked about retail, retail now versus retail later. You know, we can work around the edges. But I think that when we do our own traffic study, if it's gonna be a holistic one, that we should consider the potential uses of town.
Of course.
I just wanna say, I am.
In there.
From someone who's relatively new to all of this, I'm concerned about the alternative. What, you know, we could, we could, coulda, woulda, shoulda, we could look at our crystal ball. What's it gonna look like in five, ten years? But what is the top of my mind is what happens if this project doesn't come, go through. What happens to Rite Aid if we can't get this going? That becomes a dollar trade that sits there.
Dollar General and.
I mean, I'm I'm.
I'm telling you the truth.
I'm ju. I, listen, part of me thinks the owners of the that property have a right to do with it.
Right.
What they want. They own it, right? That's capitalism. But I appreciate that we're here now and we have some say as a town board, as a planning board, as a community. Ta- I'm taking off my my town board hat and I'm speaking just as a resident, okay, who's relatively new to this community. I am concerned that we have this eye source sitting there right now. And we're still in the early stages of what it might be. And if we don't get this project going, then what happens?
So I I completely agree with you. But um it sounds as though.
It's not to say we shouldn't be diligent.
No, I just, no, I understand. It, but it sounds as though the, what's being presented to you guys is that it's this or it's a dollar tree. And I'm sorry, but there is space, a lot of space in between those two outcomes for something different. And the way in which maybe it should be different or we want it to be different could actually be on the table if you decide to negotiate that. And uh I heard somewhere that the applicant, and you could, you know, inform me on this, that you might be willing to not do the commercial ground floor. If that's the case, would you do four floors of retail or would you do a three, uh, four floors of residential? Or would you do a three-story residential building, forty-five units? If that's the case, I think you're within existing zoning with, I mean, I think you don't need a zoning. It's as a right.
I think.
Why go through? To clarify, please.
Yes, please.
Two stories. The the ground floor is mostly parking. There's only a small sliver of retail.
Okay, got it. So you need the four floors.
You need the four floors because otherwise you can't accommodate the parking.
That makes sense. Thank you.
So and just with regard to the Dollar General, since that was brought up, I I don't, I I actually do think it it's something that can happen because we've seen all over the country where Rite Aid went out of business, Walgreens holds the lease, and they have put in Dollar General stores in those vacant spaces. So I don't think it's just lip service. I think it's something that could happen. And honestly, I don't think it's anything that most residents want to see to Ali's point.
The lease, you know what the terms are?
I I can speak to it. I'm sitting right here. We've fended off Rite Aid for, we've been sitting here since June of twenty-one, we started this process, for the sole purpose to put this with timeframe in front of us before that lease is up. There's two years left before their options kick in. We all assume that Walgreens is not gonna exercise their options because why would they? It's a dark store. They.
Right.
Would be happy to get out early if I had something to build sooner. And we'd be thrilled to make that deal sooner. But there is gonna become a point in time where that space has to be marketed and that space needs a lot of work to put a new tenant in. And that timeframe is getting compressed. And we started this again eighteen months ago. And we're getting to that timeframe where it's gonna take nine to twelve months to market it and and six months to get somebody in there, vice versa. You're talking eighteen months. There's not much time left here before the family that owns a property that I am partnering with as a developer needs to make a decision. It's their family property. They have an income stream now. They're gonna need to make a decision. And it's not a, we're not saying this as a threat, but it's just the reality of, that's why we got started. And I say I've been involved since June of twenty-one. Don Feinberg, I don't think Don is on, has been involved with the Form-Based Code for five years already. So he's been trying and truly, and I say this, and I've said this in every presentation, they wanna build a sustainable net zero carbon building for the future. I mean, this is truly, for his kids, his grandkids, truly a passion project. This is not the project that is, you know, the fifty-story glitzy condo. This is a four-story sustainable project that will put Chapua on the map, that will be fantastic to build and will be good for everybody. And and we're all in this room working together and we're so thankful that everybody came together tonight so quickly to try to work through this and solve this. And whether the retail's forty-two hundred square feet or two thousand square feet, I mean, if you chop that in half, it's only, according to the nineteen fifties code, twenty-five parking spots it needs, if it is a food service operation. You know, those numbers drastically contract as you shrink that down. It still has a piece of retail in there. And if you adjust that to what current code should be for commercial parking, all of a sudden, maybe it's only fifteen spots and we can accommodate eight in the building. It it's really not even a conversation. And we can all get this done in the next few months and get this thing started in six months and built. And it'll be done in eighteen months.
So I I think that those are all great objectives. And I think that everybody should probably want to get behind them because I think it would be good for the town. But there are specifics involved here that need to be addressed. And I think that that's all we're trying to do is to address those specifics. And if there is a different conclusion that the town has to your, in the specifics, to your proposal, then, you know, you maybe you should be prepared for that. I mean, that's all we're trying to do is to do the right thing here. And I, you know, everybody, I'm, it's not fair to say, it seems as though there is a a um great um fondness for excitement about the design of this building. And I'm just not a fan of that. To me, it's, there are some significant problems with the way in which the building is designed, the massing of it.
But we're not, that's not what we're supposed to be talking about now. We have an architectural review board and you're gonna look at it when the site plan comes up.
Yeah, yeah, I I.
We're not there yet.
I got a bunch of questions when all that is, I'd love to see the, you know, the reports.
And the architect will come in and all, but that's not what's before anybody.
I have, I know, it actually, let me finish. It actually.
Let me, you can have it all um in a minute. I have to leave. So I have a, I have to take care of my wife, so.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Thanks for coming, David. It's good to see you likewise.
Nice to see you.
Sounds great.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, I'll probably lose it like I did the other one.
That's okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Dick.
Have a good evening.
It's it's interesting that you say that because actually, if you read the proposed zoning, the specifics of the design are actually embedded in the zone. And so it's, so it's difficult to report back our observations and recommendations about the zoning unless we actually address the design.
Is that necessary? That the design.
Right, that's what I was gonna say. We can, so the comment would be from the planning board, be like, maybe let's take the design element out of the legislation and let's purely talk about.
That is our.
The zoning.
That is our.
And that would still could get us there, so.
Yeah, and I I think from a forty thousand foot level, i- as long as there's a really good faith commitment from all parties to work on the the legislation initially and do whatever data search we need, I'm very confident this 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 can work. And that we will, we will find a way to make sure this works. And also, to Eldad's point, work successfully. We we want this to be successful for the applicant because it'll be successful to town. So if we have that commitment, there are gonna be some bumps in here, but we're gonna have to, I think, I don't think we should do it now. There, we had, you know, specific objections and issues and concerns with the legislation. And I think we should probably get a memo out to you on those so that you see those. Because I, to Tom's point, it's very, I think it's very correct. Embedded in this proposed legislation are site planning issues that really do not belong in in zoning. So it's a little bit too tight. And also, by the way, that might make it too difficult for the next lot north.
Oh, it's a problem.
Uh, up there to impose some of these things on that lot. And I think to a certain degree, maybe we have too much detail. If we pull some of the detail out, we'll enable the next lot on the next, on that side, if we're going to go that route to to work and develop. So um i- i- in in a good faith effort to to make this work, I think, you know, some elements where the applicant actually put too much in and made it too stringent and might impose too much on the next applicant. So we have to be careful about that, I think, to enable and promote uh the development we wanna see on North Greeley.
So I that just parenthetically, the reason I raised the design, my concerns about the design would be so that you didn't get blindsided down the road. Because um I don't wanna come in, I don't want the planning board to come in like, you know, three weeks from now or two months from now after the zoning is all fixed and all of a sudden say, you know, we've got a big problem with this thing. So just to let you know that I think that there are some concerns that really ought to be looked at. And um to the extent that um, uh, I don't know how that's gonna shake out. It'd be up to you guys to decide.
But if the design inform, if the design elements come out of the zoning legislation, you guys would feel a lot more comfortable, is what I'm hearing.
Yes. You had leave design and planning to design and planning. Zoning is, leave zoning to zoning. Zoning to me would be height, right? Um, they, there is in the proposal, there is a specificity with respect to openings in the street wall, for example, which are actually quite large, a specificity with respect to parking, which also are zoning things. Uh, the street.
Setbacks.
Setbacks and all of the, not just four stories, but sixty feet. Those are the kinds of things that that if you're gonna put them in zoning, it'd be really good to understand what that means beforehand. And in order to understand what that means beforehand, it's actually to review the design. So there is a, you know, it's sort of a chicken and the egg. Right, exactly.
And then to a certain extent, you know, the applicant explained to us, and I thought was a very fair point that they made, to a large degree, they threw this all.
to a large degree, they threw this all in here, because they heard from the town board, they heard residents, they wanted the town board to have good control over this, this, this parcel, and what it looked like. So I think it was really a good faith effort on the part of the applicant to, to throw this stuff in here, to say, here, you will have control over this, this, this. And what we're saying is that if you do that, because you have to have at least two different lots involved here, you might be imposing too many stringent requirements for the next person. So, uh, I think it was out of good faith that they, that they put those in there, and it was explained to us that way. But, um, we would probably suggest that some of those be amended or removed.
And in fairness, unless I'm mistaken, it was the applicant's suggestion that the zoning text and the design would be advanced at the same time. And, um, so I would, I, I would guess that would mean a town board, planning board review of the design itself before the zoning gets put in place, um, which would be great. I mean, actually, I think that's the way it should be done.
Could accelerate things nicely.
Okay, that makes sense. Yeah, that, that's, I like that suggestion.
Acceleration's part of success.
And, you know.
I actually think, honestly, that there was a meeting yesterday, I think that they came off of that and thought, let's do the legislation first. And then do the other piece of it.
Well, but that's not, okay. That's your choice, actually. It's not theirs.
We're flexible. We'll work with it.
Well.
May I ask a question, since the applicant had a chance to make some points? I'd like to ask a question.
Well, it's, hang on, Maggie, hang on, because it's a work session, and we're not done yet, but just sit down for a minute, and I will call on you. Is there anything else that the applicant would like to share with us here today?
No. We're thankful that everybody got together tonight, and we appreciate everybody's time.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, all right, Maggie.
Okay, my, my question is, is the new standard for all residential development in the Hamlet going to be one parking space per unit? Is that going to be the new standard?
Nobody knows.
That's something we need to consider.
And if the, the, the behavior that's being depicted here, that people will have one car, is not behavior that I know to really exist in suburbs. You can't get to, you know, if you have two adults who wanted to have a life, you're going to have two cars. If, if the assumption that there's going to be one car doesn't pan out, where's the release valve? Is it parking on Bishop and Maple, or is the car circling and circling and circling? And is it our parking spots over the commuter lot that's public land? I mean, it's our land that we give to residential developers to build and properties and make profits off of. I mean, where's the release valve?
So I think that's a good point. I mean, to me, I definitely see a difference between, uh, an owned house. So on my house, I, I have more than one car. And I own my property, and I can do with it what I will, as long as my cars will fit on my driveway, I can do that. A rental property like this is being proposed, they would have in their lease that you can only have one car.
You only have one parking space.
If, or one parking space, if people say that is not good enough, they won't rent there.
Well.
And they'll go somewhere else where they can have their two or three cars.
Stewart Place in Mount Kisco, my in-laws live there, and they don't have enough, uh, parking spaces. Uh, my in-laws didn't start out with two parking spaces, it was a rarity, but lots of people had two spaces, and they find, they still do. They, they only get one space, but they find places, and Mount Kisco can absorb a heck of a lot more than we can absorb. They find spaces to park. Here, you're going to have a problem with traffic. You have houses sitting there that are going to have people, whether you like it or not, they're going to be parking on streets. You have deliveries, there's, I don't know if there's a loading dock in this thing. I don't know if we're, you know, the, the Fresh Direct parks, or Amazon parks, or whatever. I mean, you know, it's, it's a complicated situation. And if the new standard is one space per residential unit, which other people are going to ask for, if this gets it, then it's just going to be multiplied, and before long, we're going to be squeezed into building a parking garage.
It's interesting, just this anecdote that I could share. I was at a ULI conference a number of years ago, and I'm sitting at a lunch table with a town official from one town, a town official from another town, and they're talking about parking. And one guy says, gee, you know, I, I have a big problem, because there's just not enough parking. I mean, people are circling, and we just can't find a place to park. And the other guy said, I wish I had your problem, because all I have is vacancies, because people aren't coming to town, right? And so, you know, it's sort of something, you know, to wish for, maybe. I mean, it doesn't mean that you shouldn't try and solve it. There's another thing about, about parking as public infrastructure, I don't know, maybe it is, maybe it isn't, different from like a sewer system, right? Or a, um, uh, pick anything, a road network. And sooner or later, these things reach capacity. These are public facilities, public infrastructure that reaches capacity. What happens to the next developer that comes in and, and he's told, I'm sorry, you know, you gotta, we have a problem, because your, your traffic is going to generate, you know, congestion, and you need to fix, or we need to fix that intersection. Or there isn't enough sewer capacity. We need to sort of upgrade the sewer plant. So that guy has been sort of pushed out of the game by guys who came before. And maybe that's sort of an analogy for this situation. It could be true that, you know what, first guy in gets the capacity that's available. And that's sort of, I don't know whether that should apply to parking. I don't know whether that, um, should apply to parking specifically with regard to our problem here, which is North Greeley. But it's something to think about in terms of public infrastructure, and how it's assigned and how it's used over time. And if it means that, well, one day, we're going to have to build a parking garage, because the west side of North, east side of North Greeley now is ready to be developed. And because they're assembling lots, you know, that's something that perhaps you need to do. I don't know.
Well, this is, so, oh, go ahead. So I think my question is, you know, do we think about that now, or do we think about that later?
Exactly.
And I was going to say something similar, which is, this is a function of what our vision is for the town. Because the question of who comes first and gets the capacity is really a problem that's based on what we want to see for the future. If we were saying, well, this is all we want on North Greeley, then it's not a problem. So, you know, that's kind of the problem with not beginning with a vision for the entire area.
Well, then you're back in a Form Based Code, which is what we actually didn't want, because we didn't want to plan for a thousand units that may be in town and have to solve for parking for everything else at that time with absolutely zero oversight. I think, I think, let me, let me just finish talking for a second. So to Maggie's point here, we're talking about one building, and the reason we're even considering potentially one parking spot per unit is first because it's rental, also because they're offering car-sharing services and electric scooters and other, other things that a regular building may not offer.
And they're smaller units, too.
And they're smaller units, and they have, they do have, um, you know, issues to contend with that other lots may not have. So are we making the decision? No, at this point, we're not. And my understanding is the way zoning works is if we say, yes, you can do this zoning, and this is zoning for these lots, it doesn't mean that the next person who comes in automatically gets that zoning.
Exactly.
We can absolutely say no. And we may say, look, it's okay, if you're going to offer A, B, C, and D, we might consider that for you, but we are under no obligation to do that, which is why we didn't want a Form Based Code where it was one, one obligation for the entire town for a thousand units, which was something we didn't want.
And I don't think anybody's talking about that. And the, the, I don't think that, under the current zoning, right now, unless I'm mistaken, under current zoning right now, the people on the east, on the east side of North Greeley have a right to develop, right? You can't say no to that.
Absolutely.
Right, as a right, you can't say no to that.
Stories or whatever they're allowed there.
Just to be clear, because I've heard this a few times tonight, it's two stories on both sides of the street, and the first floor has to be commercial. You don't get to three until you go farther up the block, and you get to the BR district, the LCAM property to the north of the Rite Aid property.
Thank you.
There you go to three, and you don't have the ground floor requirement.
Okay, thank you. So, um, I was going to say that, and thank you for that, I was going to say that, that parking is a real problem. You can't, on a twenty-five-foot lot, the only way you can get a car on the lot to park, unless you have a shared easement, you know, to get to the back of the lot with a guy next door, is to park in front of the building. Twenty-five feet, you can only get two cars there. So for them to do any, any more than what two cars would allow, right, they need to find parking elsewhere. And so it seems to me that that needs to be put into the calculation of all of these numbers that we're talking about, so that in rezoning this particular, particular piece of property, you don't take as-of-right development away from the other side of the street. That's all I'm saying.
Mm-hmm. That makes sense. Or risk hamstringing all of those properties in the future, and then we have a problem on the other side of the street where they start to filter. I mean, we don't want to make it impossible by taking away options, right?
Yeah, if, if it's.
I, I'd just like.
Yep.
Yes, Canaan.
Yeah, uh, sorry, I'd just like to add, uh, to this, in, there, you know, we have to think about, like, like Lisa said, Form Based Code was too big, too wide. We're now looking at a single property. What we are suggesting is let's look a little beyond the single property and make the, you know, sort of come up with the most reasonable solutions and the reasonable assumptions for that, for that area. And then, you know, like you said, we're not promising that just because we're, we're going to allow one parking in this one build, you know, one parking per residential unit, that would become the case across the board. So I think we have to make those kind of calls here. Otherwise, you either have nothing, or, or the, or this conversation of a big, huge step, which neither one is palatable to us, because there is going to be change. So I feel like we're sort of talking about this, we all agree we need a parking study that is a little more inclusive, larger than the site. Um, but at the same time, sort of thinking about what I just heard about, you know, is this going to mean that every residential unit that comes in there is going to have just one parking? There, there, we don't need to commit to that kind of rigidity. I, I, I totally agree.
I agree with you.
That's what I wanted to say, too. I think earlier in the conversation, Canaan and Eldad both made that exact point, is the reason why this project and the way that we're doing it appeals to me is because it's very site-specific. I didn't want to suddenly do a whole new zoning, and now it's a North Greeley free-for-all. I think this is a very thoughtful way for us to approach. We could work out all of the things. We could be very super diligent. What applies to this property doesn't necessarily need to apply to future properties. We don't have to be so rigid. We can work this out, and if, you know, a smaller parcel down the line doesn't have the type of parking spaces, well, that's what had happened here. But I think that, um, doing things, you know, brick by brick, instead of just one broad stroke, is what the people wanted, and that's why they voted the way that they did. And I think that's what we're trying to achieve now, is that balance. We can't go this way, we can't go that way. We have fifty North Greeley, that's what we should think about, and, you know, we can't foresee or predict every problem that might arise in the next five to ten years. We need a more comprehensive parking study. I, I hear that from everybody, and I think that's important. I think we would all agree. I think there's some things in the legislation that we could tweak, modify, make better, stronger. We should do that. But I think for the most part, we're enthusiastic about the project, and, and we should be doing what we can to, to move forward with it.
I agree a hundred percent.
Yep.
Any other thoughts?
I, I just think we need to move to the, the parking study.
Yep.
So, so that we can move forward.
I also think, just if, if I could jump in here, um, I think the comments made by, again, I couldn't quite see, but that the, the member of the public are legitimate questions. They shouldn't stop us from figuring out how to get to a solution that makes sense. But they're legitimate questions to be asked, right, the, the, the impacts here. And again, I, I mentioned this at the beginning, and I hope my connection is stable, sufficiently stable, just to say that, we also need to think about the process, right? I mean, there, there's, there's the, the site and the, and the project itself, which conceptually, conceptually, from what I've seen, I love. And I'd love to find a way to make it work, but thinking, you know, beyond it a little bit also, as we've discussed, figuring out how to get there, uh, in a way that makes sense for the town. I would love to figure that out together, and I'm so happy we're having this conversation. But then, from a process standpoint, uh, the process, uh, is, is, is worrisome to the planning board. I think that, that came across in, in the, uh, the process that's proposed at the moment. You know, it's not exclusively site-specific, but also isn't bigger, uh, it's just, it's a little confounding a little bit. And we'd love to fix that also, so that we can get to a place where we're comfortable with that also. I think Tom spoke to some of that, some of those issues, and, and, uh, you know, we have a bunch of recommendations associated with that.
All right, so I think, uh, what the applicant certainly can take away from this is that everyone here seems excited about the project and wanting to figure out how we can move this along, make it work while still making sure that we have, you know, appropriate parking throughout town, that whatever, um, commercial space is going to be in the building is not going to have a detrimental impact upon overall parking. I, and, uh, that's where we're going to move. And then you, the planning board, you're going to look at, um, legislation, which we know has to be changed, certainly the beginning of it definitely does.
Yeah.
Um, and that's, that, to me, is kind of an easy fix.
I think so, it's easy.
Um, and we'll look at what, you'll look at and, you know, recommend to us what kind of site-specific language should be coming out. And I definitely understand the need that if this is a, a special permit, and it's obviously applying to a larger area than just, just the applicant's property, we don't want to hamstring any other development within that zone, which makes a lot of sense. So, um, you'll certainly give us those recommendations.
Yeah, and I think, um, I think the referral time on this was supposed to be January thirteenth, so we'll need an extension on that. Counsel. How much time?
About two weeks.
You know, two weeks. So give us a time, we have to meet again. So we have a meeting next week, and that, that should do it, if that's, if that's.
Should we set a schedule, some type of a schedule?
And I, I think it would be helpful, kind of going forward, for the planning board and the town board to have these kind of meetings, I think.
Absolutely.
I, I at least think, I think the rest, everyone thinks that these are pretty helpful, um, for everyone involved, just to kind of talk through issues and.
We usually do this until people throw us out, so it's fine.
So maybe, uh, I'll, I'll talk to you, and we'll, I'll talk to you, and we'll figure out kind of the schedule of what makes the most sense to, to have these meetings more regularly, so we can discuss any issues before either board kind of goes down a path without realizing what the other board is doing, or what issues the other board is considering. So I think that that would be very helpful.
Even on this, uh, the next memo, per se, on the, um, the legislation, perhaps before that's, you know, set forth in stone, we come in and, and talk to you about it, and talk to you about the, identify the actual concerns, identify the issues, and have, and lay those out before you, because ultimately, you, you're going to have to make the call.
I agree. Excellent.
That would be helpful.
So we're at, going off track. We're, we're, we're moving, you know, in the same track, in the same way.
I, I have a, a specific request.
Oh, that's good, that's good, yeah, that's good.
Which is, can we please get the information? We would have loved to, we embarrassed ourselves last time, because we didn't have the parking study. We don't have drawings of the project. Maybe you guys do. We don't have drawings of the project.
So Sabrina, can we commit to making sure the planning board has all the materials that they need to kind of discuss the project and, and make sure they're, they're appropriately informed?
Sure.
Thank you.
So do we want to maybe pick a date for our?
So, no, let me talk, we'll just talk about it offline, and we'll figure out a date that makes most sense. Before we go, though, I see Chuck waving his hand back there, so I will come on up. It's a quick question.
Cardiac exercises.
Wait, I need a few more steps for the day. I, um, I have to just make two very, 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 very broad, broad observations.
Sorry, who's speaking?
Charles Napoli.
Chuck Napoli.
Chuck Napoli. He's a town resident and local architect as well.
And, um, uh, I, the, the observations I'm making after working in this town for fifty years and working on dozens and dozens and dozens of sites up and down the hill with this board, the big observation here is that it looks like we're, we're putting an awful lot of development on a, on a piece of progress. development on a, on a piece of property that, that is kind of, kind of hurting, trying to fit all this stuff on that property. What we're talking about is in a density of 56 units per acre, which is, which is, when you look at the overall context of this summer village or this hamlet or, or residential kind of feeling village, seems to, seems to be a little too much. Multiply that 56 by 0.8, you end up with 45 units on that property and all of the other things that goes with it. And that's the second comment. Comment is, the second one is this property, as it stands right now, is in the parking district. And, and it has parking that it's already sharing with all the other places across the street and, and, and the person that runs the veterinary and Susan Lawrence and people are walking to the opportunity shop back and forth. This property is in the parking district. And the parking district has certain regulations to be able, for people to use that parking lot, not just the property lot. My other big picture is that why is this person allowed to hog all of the parking on that property, which is in the parking district, which is meant for other peoples to park? And that's all I wanted to. Two big, big things that should start forming what really can fit on that property and, 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 and how it fits within the community. That's all.
All right. Thanks, Chuck.
Thanks, Chuck.
All right. So.
Heather, record. We don't believe that Rite Aid is in the parking district. It ends at Susan Lawrence.
Okay. So we, we can, we'll figure that out. Okay, thank you. There was a statement, I don't know if you heard, that we think the parking district ends at Susan Lawrence and that they're not actually in the parking district. But that's something we have to look.
Somebody changed the map?
We, I, I, we'll have to, we'll have to look at it.
Thank you.
Figure it out. Okay. Does anyone else on the board have any, either board have anything to say? Maybe in person first and then on Zoom? All right. Anyone up on the giant Zoom board?
No.
All right. Well, again, I want to, I think this was really, really productive. I want to thank the planning board for coming, especially on such short notice. To Ally's point, I will, we'll meet and figure out the next time that makes sense for us to get together. But I think we should do it on a regular basis so that we kind of not only keep the process moving, but that boards don't kind of work down opposite paths and we, we kind of are walking down the same path. Even if we disagree, at least we can, we can try to, you know, work everything out together.
Right. Disagreement is not bad.
Disagreement is not bad.
If we wait for perfect, this is going to fail. So if we wait for perfect, this is going to fail miserably on a global scale. So.
There's no such thing as perfect.
That's right.
And hold on to your hats because people, really, Lisa? I don't believe that for a second. If that one's said, it'd shock me. My voice would.
I know, I know. I know. It's not, I'm sorry to break that to you.
I was going to say, hold on to your hats. We've, we've been through it on the east side with the Legionnaires. We've been into the form-based code and now this is going to be people.
Inchapeco crossing and everything else. Yep.
People are going to be 100% happy, no matter what we do.
So just, just, sorry, one final note. It would be good, I think, going forward, as they say. Hopefully, we're going to be going forward, that when we meet, we have some sense of a defined agenda and topics that we're really focused on that contribute to the sequence of decision-making.
Yep.
And if site planning is part of the decision-making now, then we'd probably be embedded in the, in the code. And we'd probably be talking about that. If the decision is to take it out of the zoning, then there's an opportunity to sort of deal with that a little bit later. But it would be, so that we could sort of marshal our brains and our thoughts and be productive for you.
Perfect.
Excellent.
All right. Sounds good. Okay.
Move to a turn.
Second.
Yeah, okay.
All in favor?